When he put my bid on the next agenda or something like that.
I like it.
He's playing it better than I can.
The chief.
That works.
Assistant chief or the president. Are you president?
Yeah.
You are president?
Yeah, that's my thought.
He's assistant vice chief.
You're so lucky.
I'm telling you.
Yeah, me too.
All right, it's six o'clock. Four members here present, so we do have form. We'll go ahead and get started. I'm trying to make this short and sweet. If they don't make it on the agenda, we do have Keith Moore. Wanted some time. Keith, you want to go ahead and talk to the council?
All right. Well, as y'all probably all know, and I'd like to do, you know, we started the race association and had some pretty good success down here at the arena, our resident arena there. And, you know, we were hoping that y'all would really consider our bid for that property out there. At the lake, you know, we've got a lot of folks interested in this deal that are coming from other communities. And just by several of us talking to some folks, there's other people interested in coming in, you know, coming in, you know, later on. And, you know, of course, this is kind of our downtime right now, this part of the year, but we really need to get something going. Like I said, we need more area because we don't have enough room for people to park and, you know, it just needs to be a more organized situation. And that would be an absolutely perfect situation for out there with facilities that are already the infrastructure that's there. And like I said, we're really, you know, look for your support on this deal if you see fit. And, like I said, we've got some folks coming in from, we're going to be involved in that concert to a certain degree. And then, like I said, with the other folks coming in, I think it would be a positive thing for the, for the community as far as, as an economic impact, quite honestly. I'm not going to sit here and try to tell you that it's going to be, you know, NASCAR or anything like that, you know, but, you know, we've heard some stories about some stuff over at Spur, Dickens, you know, Kent County area, whatever that, you know, wherever that was, because that track over there, several years ago with a motocross track, well, they got too big, you know. I don't know if they didn't have enough property or just, you know. But anyway, it's just something that we might be able to look forward to and, you know, the community's starting to get behind us on this thing down here, so hopefully it'll just continue to grow. And, like I said, we sure appreciate your support on this deal. And y'all got any questions for me, just please ask.
Anyone have any questions for Keith?
I have a question. Have you looked into liability?
We have. And we're going to have insurance.
Yes, we will have full liability.
It will be our insurance. It will not be, the property owner will not be liable. We will be liable for. Of course, we're going to do, the waivers as much as we can, have people sign away liability when they pull through the facility, but you still have to carry some type of a liability and we will do that and make sure that we do that in a proper, you know, proper way so we're covered and make sure that it will not come back on the land, on the land of the city being or whatevers. But we've already, we've already started looking into that and don't know that we have prices yet, but we're, as soon as we get something concrete that we know we're going to do, we can start doing that.
And we can give you a copy of it, you know.
Well, I think the council wants a whole good question.
Yeah, yeah, almost everything, like I said, we want to be, we want to be as open as we can be, you know, I mean, none of us are going to make this, none of us are going to make money doing this thing. In fact, it's going to cost us a lot of money. It already has. And we'll continue to do that. But it's something that we enjoy and we enjoy supporting the community, you know, most every place is voluntary anyway and as y'all are. So, but like I said, it's just something that I think will improve the community. Anything else?
What kind of, I mean, what kind of plans, what kind of improvements are you planning on making? I mean, what, you said there's infrastructure set up out there. What do you mean there's infrastructure?
There's, there's water and electricity availability out there to some degree. I mean, we have some lines and different things like that, but it's there. Whereas, we've looked at some other properties that would be, have to build fences. This is already fenced off, you know, the areas that we're going to utilize for right now. And like I said, the electricity, there's lines going out there, so, I mean, it wouldn't be a major issue to get that. Like I said, Dunigan's got some water meters down there. I don't know exactly what we'd have to do, but there's, there's the availability. I'm sure, or I hope there's availability, plus there's water in a tank up there on top of the hill, on the south end of it. And that's kind of what we're looking at. And again, it's alternative, it's just something we've just looked at briefly, but, you know, start on that, start on the south end of it, the southeast side of it and do some clearing up there. And that way, we can get in for this concert deal. But the east side of the, southeast side of the property, clear that, where that tank is, clear that off, make that a parking area. And then just to the, to the west of that tank, go off in there and that's where we're going to try to put our track behind the tank. What we were thinking about, again, is, you know, some type of a bathroom, picnic area, somewhere where people can go to. And there's a road that runs east and west through the property, right there. And on the north side of the property, kind of west of where the gravel is, we talked about clearing, clearing an area there. And that way, the kids can utilize that for their go-karts and things like that. A little safer environment plus, but they're also going to be able to be observed by their parents and what have you and, you know, so it'll all be in that general area initially, you know, and then, like I said, the expansion, hopefully in the future, you know, there's people brought up a BMX motocross type track. Again, this is way down the road. I'm certainly not trying to say that this is all going to happen, you know, next week or anything, but, but like I said, that kind of a track, you know, we talked about, you know, circle track for go-karts, the road course type for go-karts, several little things. And then, any ideas that anybody else has? I mean, we're certainly open to any suggestions and, like I said, I think it'd be a, I think it'd be a beneficial deal for the community.
For the, for the me, future for the deal in April, which y'all are shooting for, you're talking about clearing off land and developing a, one, one track for right now?
One track for right now, unless it, unless, you know, we did have.
If time permits, we will, we will proceed on. I mean, we're not going to, and I don't mean to take the waste, we don't, we're, if we can get our main track built and we still got time, we're, we're going to keep going. I mean.
You are aware that right there, outside that gate, probably fifty yards off that fence line, running north and south through the water line, there right there, right?
Yeah, it's Johnny, did it?
Southwest, in the west.
See, we ought to be, we ought to be away from all that.
Yeah, it's, we'll, we'll observe all that stuff.
Call somebody in to market.
Yeah, we'll call Big Tefany and have that line bound and whatever else is, is there.
What kind of lease y'all looking to get, what timeframe, length of deal? They're going to be by year?
It's four-year lease of that.
Yeah, it's a four-year lease. You can either, what, pay it all at once or pay it by the year? I think that's what, is that what we had discussed?
That's what we discussed.
Yeah, that's what we discussed.
I think Ralph and I can discuss those terms, you know, later on, but, you know, wherever, wherever the council agrees to, so. If we get the bid. I apologize.
Are there any further questions for Keith? Keith, do you have anything else to add?
I, I think that's it. Like I said, I appreciate y'all's time. I know we just played so well, so thank you so much. Thank you guys.
He's got one of these jobs too.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move ahead and open the bids and this is not my letter opener, just wanted to.
It's kind of cute. Make sure you get a real good picture of that. Wow. Who's styling?
Thank you.
I could bang my eyes.
First bid is for Michael Olson for five dollars per acre. Second bid is for five hundred fifty-one dollars from Timothy Mettler.
We got a calculator divided seventy-eight point eight acres by the five hundred and that's what it would be by the acre. Do that.
How many thirty-eight twenty?
Seventy-eight point eight or seventy-nine point eight?
I think it's seventy-eight.
Third bid is from John G. Contero for five hundred forty-four dollars and sixty cents, seven dollars an acre.
Is that green?
Yes, that's green.
So the other one's coming to be seven dollars an acre.
Yeah.
What was the total?
Five forty-four sixty.
Fourth bid is from Bill Mullen for four hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Who am I reading that for?
Six.
Six?
Fifth bid from Lorenzo Palamocco for twelve dollars and sixty cents per acre. Sixth and final bid is from Jackie Ray for seven hundred dollars. Seeing how we have Stephanie and Michael with conflicts of interest, that leaves Chris and Billy vote on that. My recommendation would be for the Bill Mullen, the lawnmower association. However, if y'all want to discuss it, y'all are welcome to.
Do we know, these people came and talked to us about their purpose, do we know the purposes of the other bid?
No, they haven't listed them. Lorenzo.
Just from Hilton.
Just from Hilton.
From the lawnmower. Not from Grayson.
Grayson? Is there any representatives from any of the others?
We don't have any, any other thing else to discuss, so I haven't got any questions. Do you have any thoughts?
Well, my only thought is, I have tried to find something since I was first elected to do with that land that was productive for the city. I think that your proposal is a good one. I know not everybody is into lawnmower races. I happen to think there are a lot of them. Of course, I miss Stephanie wrecking, but it's probably a good thing.
I go to Patty's, well, I just frame by frame by frame. I mean, falling over, you know, she got every bit of it.
Not to take away from anyone else who has placed a bid, but to me, I think it needs to be something that develops the economy of the community and I think that, I think that your proposal will do that. That's just, I'll just send it to our council.
Chris?
I actually tend to agree with that as well. I mean, I have a few concerns about trying to develop the land and, and something doesn't come through and it doesn't turn out the way everyone hopes or plans or something gets canceled and we have a bunch of midway development out there that gets left and then we have nothing left to do with land. That's, that would be my only concern about it, but from what they were saying, it doesn't seem like it's going to be something that's, you know, a big burden to the city, maybe either, either way, I mean, as they did, give something to clear off and turn it back to whatever, pretty good, so.
I think getting leads right now might initially be a major improvement.
What, only other thought now is, has anyone talked to Jackie Ray about it? Maybe another person has a question?
I've not heard.
We're not going to be that.
It's a long way.
He's a long ways from his house and that was one of the things that we, you know, how you hear things that, you know, was going to be loud and everything. It's not going to be like it's going to be every night.
Yeah, it'll be cool, Martin's house are there.
And we don't even have to go up to his road to get into it.
Exactly. Where they're at right now, you can just barely hear them at my house.
You know, yeah, so.
Any further discussion? Somebody else make a motion?
I'll make a motion except the, what did you name it?
Association.
It's to Bill Holland.
It's under Bill's name because he didn't put association, but it's, he's doing it for the Double Mountain Motorsports.
All right.
Who makes the motion except to Bill Holland for, for the amount of dollars? Four hundred seventy-seven dollars? Third second?
All second.
Three seconds? All four? All opposed? Stephanie and Michael stand.
And we will have to get the resolution. I believe if y'all go ahead and discuss to pass the resolution, we can do that even though we don't have it on the table. The resolution would be worded basically that Ralph takes care of the lease agreement.
I think we've got, got the resolution.
Did he say that? I didn't have one, so.
Basically, the resolution states that it allows me as mayor to execute and deliver any real estate lease agreement on property to the one in there. Just need a.
Yeah, I just didn't have it. I didn't know.
Oh, because he lost you. I know, he always loses his pack.
So just need a motion to take care of that. Any questions on it?
I'll make a motion to.
Does that make some motion? Third second? Third seconds? All four? Opposed?
No, that is free interest in a motorcycle.
We won't be, we really won't be charging anyway. It's a donation because we're a non-profit organization.
Don't they even let you race?
I don't know if we're prepared for that.
Yeah, just get you a lawnmower, go-kart. You wouldn't believe all the kids that got go-karts this Christmas. And motorcycles, yeah.
That Dylan's car used to be so huge and they did it up and down the streets and, down the streets and they, it was huge. And the reason they don't do it anymore is the insurance got to handle it and do it just one time a year, so.
Well, we're hoping, like I said, we get this and I'm going to talk with Keith. Keith's got a guy over there for basically the bookwork and stuff and everything. He's got his, all that and everything. And the guy, Jerry Edens, the, one of our benefactors, I guess you could say, because he gave us a thousand dollars. He races them little mini cars, you know, that, what do you call it, their cars?
Wellspring.
Yeah, he, he owns a couple of them and he travels everywhere and he's supposed to be looking to, looking, you know, for the liability of how to, you know, get that and how much to get and all that kind of stuff. And he's supposed to get back with me on that.
The guys that are supposed to be coming for the acre thing from Odessa have their own lot of miniature cars, so.
Yes.
It covers everybody that's watching.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's nice.
If a tire comes out and hits you in the face, you get, hey, you're covered.
I hope I'm not that close.
All right, let's move on to mending the city budget. Chris, you weren't here last meeting with Andy from the hospital. I don't know if he got filled in on that. The ambulance service basically needs more money and they asked us to kick in an extra fifteen hundred dollars a month. And so, for the remaining eight months of this budget cycle, they're asking for, I think it's going to be twelve thousand. So what we're, what we've done, what Sonny's done, is you'll see an original budget and then a pro forma budget with his suggested improvements to the budget. And if you look on the general fund side, on the original budget, you'll see line item sixty-one fifty-eight convenience center salary and then sixty-one seventy-three, the sheriff's fund, and then down there, ambulance expense. Since we do not have the position for the convenience centers not being filled at this time, we can adjust that salary. You can look on the pro forma where that adjusts.
Ten thousand one hundred fifty dollars?
Ten thousand one hundred fifty dollars, exactly. The deputy fund, that is not actually, that does not need to be expensed this fiscal year. That's just kind of in there to prepay it. So we adjusted, Sonny adjusted that down eighteen hundred and fifty dollars for a total of twelve thousand. And you can see with the ambulance expense line item was increased to twelve thousand dollars. So basically, it's just realizing that salary position is not there anymore.
And, and this is taken to the county and county's room?
The county has approved it.
And hospitals, yes.
I think the consensus, the last meeting was the council approved it. We just need to find the line item to adjust. Any issues with that?
No.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the amended budget.
Make a motion to approve it.
Chris makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Michael, second? All four? All opposed? Next deal is more of the ambulance. If y'all remember, Chris, I don't know if this might have been before you. This revenue, we, I got an office in May, before May, the ambulance service offered, was run as a joint venture between the hospital, the county and the city, starting in, maybe first of June or something. The hospital took it over with the city and the county continuing to provide subsistence.
Or administration.
The hospital has now found out that them taking care of that would impact their Medicare reimbursement, which is a very significant, they're talking a hundred and sixty thousand a year, is what I understood. So we need to back that out and create a new joint venture between the city, the county and the hospital for an ambulance service. Andy has put together a, did y'all, and we just got this today with holiday, and they just came up with this last week. I just learned about this Thursday, so it's pretty, pretty soon. And the reason why we're having to kind of rush with this is they have to get their, some paperwork into the state February first to operate the ambulance service, so I can't remember what the name of it, maybe it's just certain.
It's the state license.
Right, licenses. So.
They're doing in March, aren't they?
Oh.
It's due in April.
Well, they start working on it in March, you know, usually in, yeah.
But the state's asking, it's due, it's due April, but the state wants it February, so I don't know why they don't just make it February.
That's a state thing.
That's, you get into government, that's nasty stuff then. So, core on the ambulance board was two members from the city council, hospital and commissioners' court. And then there was one at-large member. What Ronnie, Andy and I suggested was the same, except for the at-large member be a permanent position filled by the hospital administrator. And that the secretary for the board be non-voting and that be the ambulance coordinator.
Director.
Director. Director. And I, I think that would, that's going to fit pretty nicely.
I don't agree on the president.
You don't agree on the president?
I do not agree on the president. I think it should be somebody that's not closely, you know, in his.
Somebody that ain't got no bias feeling.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
I don't, I don't agree on it. He's got his hands full as it is and I don't think he needs another thing to worry about. He can always come to the board meetings or their board meeting and ask questions.
Okay. Here's another thing. Are you still in the way?
I, I, I still am.
President or at-large?
The president or at-large, yeah. I think it should be somebody completely different.
The forming of that particular board, is, is it going to be formed as where the president has a vote or is it?
To be a voted member?
To that.
To break ties?
To break, see, so they really, it'll be like our mayor.
Yeah, well, I still don't agree, but like I said, because, you know, it's just, I don't agree. I think it should be somebody completely, you know, away from all of it, the at-large person, that knows, you know, something, how stuff run, but not that's associated with any of the boards or the hospital. Because, I mean, he, you know, I just, I think it should be somebody left out.
He being employed, created conflict of interest.
I don't know, we already said that I could vote on stuff on the ambulance.
We don't have to table that and let's make sure.
Because I don't, you know, I'm not owner or nothing other.
I'm not agreeing with him, I don't president either.
Yeah.
I'm not, anyway.
Okay, I'm sorry.
My wife is, is that, told me others.
I missed the at-large being automatically made the president.
Well, that's just, I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, too, I mean, that's, well, because he's at-large, he's not affiliated with any of the boards, because they took two from each board. So the at-large person, they automatically made him, you know, making him president and I don't agree with that.
How would they make him president?
It's in the papers right here.
They're replacing, there won't be an at-large member anymore, the seventh seat be filled by the hospital.
Director.
And I don't agree with that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I hadn't had time to read the paper, that worked. Okay.
You know, I just, you know, he's got, he needs to, you know, he can go to the board meeting, sit in, you know, and he had an opinion about the finances or whatever, so, but, you know, I just, I just don't agree with that because, like I said, he needs to deal with the hospital and the nursing home and do all that kind of stuff and leave the ambulance to the, to the board.
But does he not run part of the ambulance as well?
No, not, not when they get this board, no.
Part of, because the hospital took over, he became the administrator of the service at that point.
So he no longer be administrator?
Administrator, no. Not when they, they form this board and everything, he won't be, because we won't be affiliated basically with the hospital.
You will be affiliated with the hospital due it's not solely under their administration.
Exactly, exactly. But, I mean, that's what I'm saying, but you put him back, he's already doing this job as it is, basically. I think it should be at-large, away from the hospital, away from the county, away from the city. I think the at-large person should be somebody completely not biased, or non-biased, whatever that word is. Whatever that word is, shut up, Michael.
How would he be biased?
Not biased, because he already forms an opinion and that's why I can't say, since I do work for the ambulance, I can't say he forms an opinion about Jennifer and everything else. You know, we've already had words, you know, I mean, and we're, I mean, we're friends. It's strictly business. We do it in his office, we walk out, we smile and laugh at each other. You know what I'm saying? And his comment was about this, is where he could, you know, he could keep his finger on the ambulance, you know, and I just, I don't agree with it. I think it should be somebody completely away from all the boards in the hospital. The, the at-large person should be.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Chris?
I would probably not agree with that. I don't think that he would need to be, I mean, if he's going to run the hospital, I would think that he would need to have some representation in it at some, some point.
There are two different needs now, though.
But he's got board members on there from the hospital board.
I mean, that is right here, that'd be two different entities.
He's already got, he's got Marvin and Buddy from the hospital board, that'll be representative in the hospital.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'll be there. So, yeah, I do think they need some, but that, but having those on there, that makes sense, so.
But they'll have an opinion past that. Billy?
Well, I, I asked something that's kind of in my brain, um, that rolls along with that, is you have the county, you have the city, and you have the, the hospital. Where's a representation of the ambulance board itself, of the ambulance service itself?
The director.
The, he's, yeah, she's the director.
She's a non-voting, she's a.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Non-voting?
Yeah.
So, would that, which I, I don't know Andy that well, would that be kind of why they're trying to put him as, whoever's director of the hospital as that voting representative for the ambulance service?
Probably not. I mean, you're looking at this and.
That's what I, that's where I was going with that.
Well, but you've got three hospital board members on that, and then you've just got two city and two county, basically. You've got three people representing the hospital.
Well, now, Andy doesn't represent the hospital. He's, he's not on the hospital board.
No, but he's the administrator. I mean, it's, but, but, you know, I, I'm, I just don't agree with it. That's all I can say about it.
Billy, sorry.
I don't know. Um.
So who else is, sorry, who else is just being the, being the extra, just a complete at-large to go for a vote, or?
No, I mean, somebody that was, is maybe interested in it. I mean, even maybe you could get Jennifer Hodges from the nursing home. I mean, you know, somebody that might know something about medical stuff, but is not association, you know, association, associated with any of the boards or in a position of being an administrator of any of the, you know, like the school or the city, like you, or, you know, or something like that.
Because I know about the ambulance service.
You know about everything.
I did it for eighteen years.
But I mean.
What about adding, what about adding, from the EMS, another EMS representative?
Another EMS representative.
But they can't be, they can't be employed to be on the board. They can't be employed by the EMS.
No, that's only EMS that they're employed.
There's only like three of us, four of us anyways.
So is this lady that's the director, she employed?
Yes.
So she couldn't be on there either?
Well, that guy hers is a non-voting.
Right, I know, so they're, they're, they're on there, so she, she couldn't be.
Yeah, yeah. No, she couldn't vote.
Okay, would you be opposed to Andy being the administrator if he was a non-voting member?
Probably. I mean, it's not got nothing to do with the voting. I mean, it really does not have nothing to do with the voting. I just think it should be another person that's not association with any, the hospital, the city, the county, you know what I'm saying? It doesn't sit on any of them boards, it's not in, in the administrator, you know, position. You know, like Sonny, I wouldn't want him there, you know, I think he's got his hands full. You know, like Gilmore's being the superintendent, you know, no, you know, that's what I'm saying, and Andy being the administrator, he needs the hospital and the nursing home is what he needs to do, you know what I'm saying? And have an opinion about that, just like me or you or anybody else have an opinion about that. You know, if we went to one of their meetings, which you'll be there, because you're on the board.
Well, the, the way it was presented to me, Andy being basically the CEO of the hospital and currently CEO of the ambulance service, and the research he's done on it, he's in the best position for the board, I mean, that's the way it was presented to me, so that's why I agree with it. Stephanie obviously disagrees.
I do.
Michael?
I don't know. It's kind of two ways to do it.
Jennifer's very smart. If they'd everybody give her a chance, she does all, you know, she's done a lot of investigating, which, like I said, she's gonna be on there and everything, but, I mean, you know, if, they just give her a chance and let her, you know, do.
She can't do it anyway, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, she can't do that part of it, but, you know, that's, I, I, I just, I disagree.
It's mixed. I got mixed emotions, but. I don't know who to replace it with.
I think with all of the, uh, changes in the medical arena, we need somebody in there with, um, who knows most about that, and I think he would be, um, be a lot closer than me as far as, uh, medical knowledge. I think the more weighted that is, the better for the service, ambulance service. That's my opinion on that. Billy? You haven't said much.
Um, I'm not hoping that we can change my name with Chris's. That's my name, I want to change it in a second. As far as Andy, I, I don't have a problem with him being administrator. Um, I mean, I understand your concern. Um, the ambulance and the hospital have to really kind of mesh together well for both to be a success. Um, I don't know. I don't know if there is an answer that would be. What do you think?
No, I, I agree exactly with what you're saying right there, that, I mean, you would think that they have to, have to be able to coincide or, you know, go hand in hand, and what Rob's saying is him being, I would think that he would need to have some kind of word in it, or some kind of say, because he's just gonna know the most about, about the medical field right now, I mean, out of all those people on there. So, I mean, I'd be sure, sure would think he would want his input at, at some level. I mean, I don't know. Maybe not the, yeah. He'd want the most qualified person helping, but having something put in there, I don't think. That's just, that's my opinion, but. And I don't know, I don't know what the thing is, if it's something for him not to have a voting interest or something, or?
That's what I was wondering, if we made him a non-voting interest and added just another at-large random person.
Or if, what if you switched him with one of the other hospital board? And we're just putting him as a member.
He doesn't, at that position, he does not have a vote. He just ties, he only ties.
So he'd be the same thing as the mayor.
Yeah, so that would be.
Pretty much useless.
Be good, but, well, that would be the good position for him to be.
Calling yourself a prince, that's cute.
Well, yeah.
We got that on camera.
Well, it's a good position for him to stand in, and the reason I, I, I look at it from the outside is I believe that him and Jennifer, the director of the ambulance service, tend to what I've seen work really well together, and if she tells him what she needs, he can convey it to that committee better, probably than somebody at-large. I mean, I mean, I think they work good together, is what I've seen. Um, and that would be good if I was in that position, just like we're, we're, Tammy would be a non-voting as a secretary. Um, but at least her viewpoints and things would at least be worth it.
Her knowledge would be invaluable.
Through, through him. Because that would be where it would come from. Everything she needed would come through him, pretty much. That's like what I would need comes through the mayor, so. But I'm, uh, gonna find an at-large person that wants to volunteer to do it.
Can you take it? I won't make a motion, it's a, it's a matter of wait.
That's a motion to accept articles, okay?
Oh, wait a minute, let's discuss Chris.
Well, this is the next item.
Okay, let's not let that go.
So Michael makes a motion to sub the charter for the Stonewall Camp, uh, county, and that's, the actual legal name will be Stonewall County EMS, I believe.
Yes.
EMS, okay. So there's a motion. They're second?
Second.
Billy's second? All four? All opposed? Motion carries. Um, next item is to appoint two city council members to this new board. Um, Andy has put my name and Billy's on there. I've served on it before when I was on the hospital board. Um, I know very little about that side of stuff. I, I was on there a whole year, and I still don't know what happened. But, uh, I don't mind serving on it again. I've talked to Billy. She has, um, some reservations, I understand. Um, so I kind of, I think that kind of leaves Chris, that he's interesting.
I want to get Michael.
Come on, he's definitely.
Uh.
That's where you're missing that one person that's there for you, Chris.
But, um.
If you're really absolutely opposed, I would.
Well, I still know anything about it. I have no knowledge to put.
You're right, they're actually.
You've served on the board before, so.
He ain't gonna learn no younger.
But, uh, this is what they always tell you when they draw you into something. They're supposed to meet quarterly.
I've been drawn into something before, so.
So that means.
Why you're setting that stage in front of me, no.
So that means, uh, after your first quarterly meeting, things will go wrong, and you have to meet every week after that. I guess that's how that usually happens, but no, um, so.
I don't know, I don't need more excuses.
Well, I am taking college classes, and homework take a lot of my time, and that's really why I would, if you would mind, please.
Say what, if you don't do that, you use the first.
I could use that one.
I want you to use that one.
I guess, I guess I'll do it.
So, um, I'll need a motion for one of the all two.
I will make a motion that Chris serve on that board.
That Chris and I serve on it?
Yes, or you were a given.
Billy makes a motion that Chris and I serve on the ambulance.
Can he, can he second that, will he?
I, I think he can second that. You can second your own.
Well, if I don't second it.
Well, can't we?
Oh, no.
I mean, can't we all vote on that? No?
That's, that's, that's gonna be your boss.
It's complicated.
Oh.
I'm not directly done with that. I don't work for.
Um.
Your wife's not appointed to the board as she is.
Uh.
I'm thinking about it as well.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Michael.
All four?
She's sitting there.
Well, but it doesn't matter.
All opposed? Stephanie, thanks. All right, last one real quick, um, is a resolution from Andy Halco on the home program. We passed this resolution last year, and I guess for paperwork sake, they want us to do it again this year. Um, any questions on that?
No.
Do we know the status of it yet? Are we gonna be?
I think we should shuffle in the paperwork.
This is the housing.
This is the housing, and it's still in process. We won't know anything about it for a while.
Okay.
It, it was twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, something.
We won't know nothing about this till about October, November of this year.
Oh, okay.
Some, some, we should know something.
But it, but it makes you the authorized representative. I mean, that was my concern with this when we first started, was, does that mean that you're now gonna be the one to tell people whether they're gonna qualify for this or not?
No, it doesn't mean that. Y'all still do that. What that does is I represent, make sure that I represent them.
Actually, that is scored outside of.
Yeah, they will.
They, 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 they have to.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, we, it would not be us, no.
This is basically some of the administrative part of it.
Yeah, the people, they.
That he has to give all the exact paperwork within needing statistics.
Because they're the ones that score it.
Right, they score. We have nothing to do. We passed up the application.
And that's it. That's as far as, yeah.
They make the decision, I think it's what.
Right.
I make the motion for the resolution.
Michael makes a motion to approve the decision. They're second?
I'll second.
I'm seconding nothing today.
I wish we had, you know, ten more things to second.
Hey, I'm.
There is one, there's one more thing that I'll even second.
I make the motion.
We, we need to.
We're through with this one, yeah.
All four? All opposed? Motion carries. Michael?
Make the motion to Jerry.
All right, Stephen.
I'll second it. I can actually do that one.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Just because you're taking a joke, you're a tough one. Otherwise, I don't know if I'd accept it either.
So y'all like her?
We gotta get the lawyer, please.